Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Weston County School District. Number one, Presley, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, this evening, we have approval of the agenda, and I would like to add one thing under for your information to be, and that's future agenda items to discuss our board self-evaluation. That's all I have.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the one change. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Visitors comments, Chuck Bartlett. Would you like to step up to the microphone for us, please? Oh, sorry. Well, I'm gonna do recognitions when you're done. You go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully, everybody got the revised layout. I think after meeting with the individual that's gonna be putting on the autocross, he seemed to think that we would want to use the entire parking lot instead of just half of it. I guess the original concern was the valugator that goes through the middle of it, but that's not that deep, so it's not gonna interfere with, I guess, the autocross. I guess the other change is we've moved pit area back to where I guess we originally had it, which is the parking lot there by the football field. And nobody will have access behind the wrestling building and so forth.
All right, questions for Mr. Bartlett?
Yeah, so I've got quite a few after our discussion from the rec board meeting last time. Looking at this, we talked about access to the gym. We wanted to make sure with redoing gym floors, we had absolute access back there, the good equipment back there. Is that correct, Adam? We were curious on what your plans are to restrict people from going where we don't necessarily want them, like say, the practice field in the back, different things like that.
Again, I guess along the, I guess, the south side of the parking lot, we will be having a security fence put across there, so nobody have access into where the autocross is. As far as the traffic, we will probably be having, I guess, in this view, people be parking here or parking elsewhere and being bused to the site. So we're gonna try to keep as many vehicles away as possible.
Okay.
And as far as the restriction back here, there is the gate that's back there now, and we will have guards back over here, making sure that only the autocross cars get into the park, the pit area.
Okay. You know, I think one of our other concerns kind of about restricting people from where to go possibly could be like the middle school parking and the bus loop. I don't know if that would be a concern or not. You know, I mean, with the amount of people we're having, that would probably show up. I think that's one of our concerns, too. Is that correct, everybody? Okay.
So Joe, just to clarify, what you're suggesting then is blocking out the entrance to the middle school parking lot in the bus loop?
Well, I mean, we'd have to go so far, but we couldn't restrict fire access, correct? I don't know if you would consider any of that fire access back there? Or emergency access?
So you, I don't think you can deny the access. So the building probably shouldn't be occupied at all. That might alleviate some of that, but usually the barrier would be something that would be mobile in case they did need to get, you know, a fire truck or something to the... The main hookup is between the two gyms in the backside here on the west. So that would be that. The gate that currently is in place is actually on the other side of the middle school parking lot, and it's the gravel road that loops up to the maintenance shop. That's the last barrier that that we actually have. So if you were going to put a barrier, you'd put a bus route, like the bus loop and the middle school loop, you know, some kind of blockade there. But yeah, one of them would have to be fairly mobile in case you did have a fire.
One would have to be mobile anyway, because the guy doing the gym floors will have to come up through the middle school parking lot and around that road. And then we can lock the red gate behind him, access to the gravel road. But, you know, he for sure will have to have access that direction, because that's how he'll access the building.
Okay. Let me gather my thoughts if anybody else has anything else to say.
Sure. Any other questions? Go ahead, Brad.
I do think one of the other questions were is, you know, how do we prevent people from, you know, wanting to pull up on the sidewalks, on the grassy areas, knowing that parking is gonna be quite a demand?
The grassy areas.
So, you know, like back in here, off to this side, those kinds of areas that...
We will be having, I guess, security guards pretty much located everywhere.
And then would, and I think the other question was, is that would also be in place for those that wanted to set up tents or something of that nature?
Uh, tents.
Like, say, I didn't want to, I don't wanna pay $200 for a hotel room, so I'd like that grassy spot right there for my tent.
No.
I think that was another question.
Yeah.
We will make sure, sorry, this is Pam Gualteri.
Go ahead, Pam.
Um, we will make sure that we have that, we could have that listed on our website that states that, you know, no tents can be pitched. They have to have like, be at like the locations that we put down for hotels, motels, RVs and all that. And then I would, I kind of put a message on there, but we, like Chuck said, we will have plenty of security and volunteers that we can put at areas to make sure nobody's parking on the grassy areas and redirect and let them know where parking's at. I was gonna get in touch with the one coal mine to see if we can use their parking area behind Maverick as well as speak with Ramsey about his building on the corner by Woody's and a couple other places to see if we can utilize parking areas so people can walk over.
Billy?
Pam, I guess, or Chuck, whoever can answer this, when we were gonna do half the parking lot, you said max speed was 40. Now that you have access to the whole parking lot, what's the estimated speed these guys will get?
We're still looking at the 40 to 50 miles an hour with the number of curves that they're gonna be putting in on the autocross track. It's gonna limit their speed, and there's not gonna be very many straightaways, so they're not gonna be able to get probably over 40 or 50.
Now, there, and just hypothetically, is there any kind of barricade, like around the course as far as someone accidentally loses control of a car, keep it from running into our buildings?
Especially on that west end, where they're much, they'll be much closer to the pool and the...
Again, I think we're still gonna be probably from the curb and gutter, we're probably, the track is gonna be 30 to 40 feet away from the, of the curb and gutter there. Talking with, I guess, the guy that sets up the tracks, he didn't believe that when they lay out the track, their speeds in those areas are gonna be reduced.
He also advised that having the full court would actually slow the vehicles down more because of the rain gutter in the middle, as well as the handicap signs that are over by the pool area. So they'll be, they might even avoid that whole corner because of the handicap signs over there. So I know that was something as well, but we don't have a layout yet from him on what his track's gonna look like.
Okay, so there are also handicap signs in the middle? And I believe there's, I don't know if there's sign or painting by the ag building.
I believe the only signs are on the, more or less, the north side of the parking lot, on the, on the parking areas there.
Is that right, Adam?
Yeah, there's signs down by the pool, there's signs on the north side in the middle, like in front of the commons, and then in front of the ag is just painted.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. Joe?
So this is just kind of what I've been wondering. I know before we asked about the football parking lot, and it was a no because of the drainage. Why not, you know, one of my big fears is that if we use our regular parking lot, something does get tore up. It's right at the beginning of school, time to fix it, you know, the money to fix it and going back and forth to get that fixed, whatever that looks like. Could we look at possibly moving the autocross area to the pit area? And moving some of that stuff around so we're, we're putting something that could be damaged in an area that's not as heavy traffic during our regular school year?
We could probably send that to Ross and ask him. I can't, I, I don't see a problem. I'm not sure what you think, Chuck, but we're, we're kind of like the middle person for that, because I just know how to drive a car fast. I'm, I'm not sure how to, how they put on their, how they map out the courses and stuff. So that would be a question for Ross, but what are your thoughts, Chuck?
We can take a look at it. I'm just not sure if there's, well, again, with the valugator going through, we'd have to take a look at that. The one going across, I guess, the big parking lot, it's only about an inch and a half deep. So that's not gonna create a problem, but if that one's over that, that could create, I guess, create a problem.
Billy?
Brad, I guess this is, have we, Angie or anybody, have we received any insurance or anything as well?
Yeah, not, not today.
Go.
Sorry, I got a lot of just things going on in my mind, and please don't think I'm trying to beat up on you guys, but that's the frustrating thing for me on this, is, I mean, we've got news articles out there saying this is a go, all of this is a go. We've got nothing saying that insurance-wise, anything secured. I mean, that's kind of, you know, and please don't think I'm trying to beat up on you guys, but I'd really like to hear from, I forgot the guy's name already, but I'd like to kind of talk to him. And, I mean, we're getting down to the wire to where it's gotta be a yes or no here soon. In my eyes, it'd be nice to get him here, we could hear from, get this stuff sorted out, make sure all the paperwork's in line. I mean, can we, can we try to get that guy on a Zoom call at our next board meeting?
I, I believe that he was supposed to be on this call. I'm not sure if there was miscommunication, as that was something Sandy was supposed to arrange, but I know he's more than willing and happy to be on a Zoom call. And I agree, I think he's the best one to have on the call.
And, and you, you could, the executive committee of the rec board could Zoom with him without having a special meeting. So you guys would have your questions. If he needs to do that, like during the day or completely different time, but you could have him get ahold of you to do that, too.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
If he needs to do that, like during the day or completely different time, but you could have him get ahold of you to do that, too.
I do think that would be best. Sorry.
Who would be the one we should contact for that? Would that be Teresa?
Oh, to do with the meeting?
With the rec, yeah.
So Joe's, Joe's the chair of the rec board?
Okay.
So you would wanna get ahold of Joe? Just schedule that.
Okay.
I'll get ahold of you, Pam. My time during the day is a little bit limited right now, so, but I'll, I'll try to work through that and get with you.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point? Do you have anything we didn't touch on, Adam? Tyler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other thing was we had discussed about getting our youth groups that are sponsored by the school as primary vendors first come for them. Is that still?
That's still.
Okay.
It's set up.
Good question. I'd forgotten that, too. Right, anything else?
One of the other questions was, that night or that afternoon, we are gonna be having the car show downtown. And if the school still wants to set up something down there also, might be a good chance to get a lot of tourists.
Great. All right. Pam, anything else?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. No, I, um, no, I will just make sure I get the rest of that information and not touch base with Joe.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pam. Thank you.
And we will take a look at the pit area.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I am gonna back up one second. Since I skipped recognitions, I apologize. I was just so excited to hear about the map. Recognitions. Bryce?
I'd just like to recognize our student council with their Make-A-Wish fundraiser they did a few weeks ago. They raised just over $2,100 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Wyoming and as well as for a family in Gillette, Owen Dragseth, a student who has some needs there, medical needs there. So I'm just proud of them for putting that effort forth.
And they did a challenge video to the Glen Rock High School Student Council that was really fun. And, yeah, I enjoyed watching that a lot. Tyler?
Uh, I would like to recognize Dr. Colgrove and Jody McCormick and Jennifer Stevenson for taking the middle schooler to science school here a couple weekend, weekends ago. We didn't take home first, they took home second. They runner-up this year. Dr. Colgrove assures me that next year we will take the gold. And especially to Jody McCormick. She helped out a few students whose parents forgot to send them with dinner money. And she covered the dinner coming home for them, so.
Thank you. And I'm proud to say that that's an awesome accomplishment and science rocks. Mr. Crabtree?
We had, for wrestling girls, we had six qualify for state. And for boys, we had six qualify for state for boys, too, for this weekend.
Yeah, Brad.
And staying with the theme of six, I think our boys placed six at state swimming as well. If I heard Coach, that's what Teresa said yesterday.
Good. And I would like to recognize the school districts and the Wyoming Education Association for their success in the Laramie County District Court today, and we'll talk about that later. But they stepped up to try to get constitutional funding for public education, K-12, and I certainly appreciate that. Anyone else? And I have, oh, I do have one more that I forgot last time. I wanted to recognize Dana for doing most of the work to do a really nice gift basket for an auction from the board. So thank you for that. We had fun. Okay, Sean?
Recognize Scotty Larson for taking second at regionals, and Dane Crabtree for second. And the girls, there was a fourth, there are two fourth placers.
It's Riley.
Brell and...
Riley?
Lichtenberg, okay, all right.
All right. All right, back to visitors' comments. We're proud to have Ms. Presley Fitzwater representing FBLA and her advisor.
Okay, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Presley Fitzwater. I'm a junior here at Newcastle High School. I play many roles, but today I'm playing the role of our FBLA chapter reporter to present an FBLA and a CTE presentation to all of you. This is just a little overview. Okay, here's our introduction. Obviously, I'm Presley Fitzwater, chapter reporter. I have my lovely advisor over here, Mrs. Ingel. She informed me that she was gonna just be moral support today, so we appreciate all advisors. We're be, on behalf of the FBLA chapter and gonna present to you why this is really important. We're also here to mark off a champion chapter checkbox, as you might say. But the champion chapter program is a set of membership requirement and engagement-focused challenges that chapters may complete for state recognition based on points accumulated. So that basically is just what we're rated at the state level for a chapter. I believe we took silver last year? Gold. We were gold. And it's a national recognition, but we get recognized at state. It's really fun. So what is CTE? It's a career and technical education. It prepares youth and adults for a wide range of high wage, high skill, and high-demand careers. It allows students to explore different career paths and figure out what they like to do and what they're good at. Classes here in our high school are all of Mrs. Ingel's classes. So that's desktop publishing, personal finance, success in the workplace, multimedia, any of those like marketing-type of computer classes and career classes. And then Mrs. Lepp, also known as Morgan, she's our shop teacher and ag teacher, so all of her welding classes and everything. Big thing for the FFA right now is it's our last year of paying dues. What is that called? What are we gonna, we're gonna be affiliated next year, so we don't have to pay dues. And all students who are enrolled in an ag class, like an ag science or a welding class, can be an FFA member. So that's super exciting, kind of grows this idea of the importance. And then Mrs. Colgrove, she's our woodshop teacher. And then Mrs. Scrimner, who is our culinary, childhood development, textiles, all that kind of good stuff, home ec teacher, if you would say. And then just why is CTE important? It prepares high school students with the skills they need to explore and pursue meaning and well-paying careers. It also equips students with technical, academic, and employment skills for success in the workplace and in further education. So moving on to why I'm here, FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. It is the largest business, career, and technical student organization in the world. FBLA helps middle school, high school, and college students prepare for careers in business. And then why is FBLA important? It develops competitive and aggressive business leadership, strengthens the confidence of students and themselves in their work, assists students in the establishment of occupational goals, facilitates the transition from school to work, and ultimately creates the future business leaders of America. Another little thing I kind of wanted to relate to, I spent a week in legislation this year as a page, and there was quite a few bills that went through the House about CTE and the importance of it, and also getting rid of it in school. So it was really important for me to come and let you guys know what we do, because sometimes our, like, extracurriculars or our elective classes go very unnoticed. But those teachers do it very well at preparing us for what our future looks like. And I have any questions if you would like to ask?
Still looking.
Share with me your student perception of those that are negative towards career tech ad legislatively.
Okay, so, um, I, I got this, I got this. So, um, I mean, I guess when I was doing this presentation, I kind of researched like what classes look like in Wyoming for CTE and like what we do for our state and our high school. And in that, I kind of found that I believe every class is considered a CTE. I think they're important, obviously. I think of Mrs. Ingel's success in the workplace class. I think I've used my resume, my cover letter, reference page, all of those items we made like in class for probably like three or four things that I applied to. I used it to apply to my first job at the Weston County Manor. And then I just know like a lot of kids, you know, sitting in classes isn't always for them, and they don't always thrive in those educational environments. But being able to go sit out in the shop and, you know, throw around some metal, and I don't do that stuff, so I don't know, like technically what they do, but it kind of allows them to like school. I think our CTE programs do very well at finding each student a place. I prefer, like, we do CTE career paths, is that what it's called? And we take like tests in whichever class we are like, our pathway is. My pathway is ag science right now, but I've taken a lot of like Mrs. Ingel's classes. And so I just think it's important for who we are as people. And I think for being such a small district, we're pretty good at finding students that can thrive. Maybe not in like English, but out in the woodshop and be creative through that, because they are just as important as any of the other students thriving in a subject class, if that answers your question. Anybody else?
Does anyone else have a question from Presley?
I was prepared for a lot of questions.
I, I would just say that I'm, I'm really proud of how many CTE classes we are able to offer when we are funded for six tenths of one teacher for this district. That's what the legislature thinks we deserve. We know we want and deserve more than that. You want and deserve more than that. And, and recognizing how much engagement it provides for some students. I mean, everybody has their own thing in school that, that really keeps them wanting to succeed in everything else. And, and CTE is one of those things, so.
And I'd just like to add on that, before my junior year, before we had to take like our CTE tests and everything, I didn't know how important CTEs were to us and how little funding we received for them, for being pretty small. I didn't know how important CTEs were to us and how little funding we received for them, for being pretty small. Um. But Mr. Hoffman came in and did a wonderful job at explaining that it's really important to take these like courses seriously because. Um, ultimately, however many kids like pass the career path, um we get more funding. Is that correct? Okay, it helps our Perkins funding. Um, but like, not to brag up anybody. But I really do believe like if it wasn't for Morgan and Mrs. Ingles, her class is also a super close career path for me. Um, but if it wasn't for those two, I definitely don't think I would. Have the confidence, I guess you could say, um to apply for different things and.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information. On our award-winning website, newslj.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Her class is also a super close career path for me. Um, but if it wasn't for those two, I definitely don't think I would. Have the confidence, I guess you could say, um to apply for different things. And like I said, I've used all the materials for. I applied for the state position and I applied for a state FBLA office with it and all the wonderful things. And then, I don't know, I think it's fun to learn something different and. I mean, I'm getting older, which is terrifying. Um, but it's important to kind of not sit down and just learn about. Something, I mean, love learning. No, no bad to that, but it's nice that our um teachers appreciate and care for what we do in our future. Go Miss Ingle.
Not for the, for the, for the Zoom participants.
Can you share with us what you believe FBLA and FFA have done for you in helping you prepare for your future?
This question's gonna make me emotional. Um, I don't really know where to start. Uh, I'm gonna sound crazy, but I think FBLA, FFA, Student Council. I just recently got into National Honor Society, so I haven't done a whole lot with that because our present officers haven't passed the torch down quite yet. Um, but all the small little clubs I join and I'm a part of um have definitely shaped me to be the person I am today. Believe it or not, I I hate public speaking. I I don't like talking in front of people as much as my dad says I never shut up. Um. I just think more people don't give like the chance to what FFA is, FBLA. Um, Student Council. I think FFA is a prime example. Never raised a cow in my life, just just to put that out there. I tried to convince Dad to get me a Highlander, but that didn't, that didn't work. Um. So it's just like important like that, like the blue jacket will always mean something different to me. And then um I've attended Nationals. Two years for FBLA and competed at that level. Um, that's built my character, gave me the confidence to. Apply for anything and everything. Um, I mean, I like to use the clubs and everything for my resume. Um, but it's ultimately just making this like concept of memories and like what high school actually is. Um, because it's not all based on what you do in a classroom, um but kind of what you do outside of it, um. It's made me very involved in my community. Uh, I don't think I could ever thank my community enough. Um, whether it's asking for money to the fruit sales for FFA or Krispy Kremes for um. FBLA or just coming out to support or all the comments on Facebook like. I think it's just grown me to be more involved and um set a standard. And ever since I had my sister in high school, she's a freshman, um I've learned that I need to set the standard for her. And just be a role model, so that's, I guess, why I do what I do.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, is that Jason?
Yes. Sorry, I couldn't be there to make faces at you. Um.
Yeah, I was waiting for it.
You you touched on it, um and it may be because back in my day, I just wasn't paying attention, but you did touch on some things about. Um, and I guess my question would be, what are we doing to promote that to students? Cause like for me, I always thought something like that was just for the ranchers, you know, the rancher kids and stuff, so. So what 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 do we do to to get the word out that, hey, it's not just that and and these are the. You know, these are the things that go on within those those groups.
Um, I think this is a really good question. I won't say any club that I'm a part of is very great at this. Um, I think we do as much as we can to promote this idea. Um. But I just like to use myself as an example is you don't have to fit the mold um to be something. Um, FFA stands for Future Farmers of America, but just recently um got renamed to the National FFA Organization. Um, so I think that was kind of a step forward in realizing that. Uh, you don't have to come from the middle of town and have cows and horses and all of that. Um. I think I found myself in a bunch of like reporter positions um through FFA, through FBLA now. Um. Probably some other clubs too. Uh, but social media obviously is a huge thing for um my group. And my um age, I guess you could say. Um, so we've. Sat down as officer teams and discussed like what can we do? Um, how can we change this mold, this standard, um this like idea? Uh, I took great advantage um when the freshmen, incoming freshmen came to like view. They did like a little orientation with all the clubs and I took a great um pride in expressing that like you don't have to be somebody. Um, to basically go out and be somebody. Um, I didn't think I would be the vice president of our FFA chapter. Um, or go to Nationals all two years of FBLA, hopefully this year too. Um. But like, I just didn't see that type of success within anything. I was kind of just doing it to, you know, stay busy. Do good on um an application of some sort. Um, but I've really tried to like push my story. That makes me seem like I'm a, I'm a big person, but um just push the idea that you just, you don't have to fit a mold. Anybody can be anybody. And I don't know, I mean, the FFA jacket will ever mean like cows and um livestock or anything, but. It definitely shaped me and my confidence in being able to be who I am today.
Well, it's amazing what you've accomplished and the things you've done in there, so so proud of you there. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? I thought he was gonna raise his hand and I wasn't gonna let him. No, just kidding. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it a lot and and I may have some ideas for. Some places to do that presentation elsewhere too, so.
I got you, girl. I've been practicing.
You did great. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Ingle.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Alright, action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. And now we will go to item two, executive session. May I have a second? It's removed and seconded to move into executive session under Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five. Subsection nine to consider and receive any information classified as confidential by law. All those in favor? Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Back to order. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, we have no old business or new business, so we are up to reports. Beau, would you like to start?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a, just a couple of updates on some of the things I talked about last um last meeting. Uh, the speakers in the dome, we've replaced six of them. One was on ba- back order. So we have two more that are going up, so that that project will hopefully be done. I'm thinking next week, we're just waiting for the speaker to come in and they'll come back and bring the lift in and he didn't want to hang. The one because it would throw the balance off for Saturday, so that's why we waited on that. Um, for the multi-factor pricing. I I met with a couple of companies, I did get a quote today, and I think we're just gonna work on. Some of the numbers and whatnot, and then we'll look at uh implementing that when we finally said uh sign the quote, so. Um, other than that, um, that's about all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions for both?
So um. With the power surge that happened here a couple of weeks ago, was there anything that got knocked out on our end here?
No, so the only thing we lost, um it 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 happened so fast, our battery backups picked it up. So we pretty much just had a quick brownout and then we were back up. Um. I think the only thing we had to fix when we got back were a couple of the the classroom audio systems we had to reset. And they're all up and working and we had one server that did not come up, so we manually had to. To to restart it and it came up. So from what I could tell, everything came up good, so.
Excellent. Anyone else? I, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just got two quick ones. Uh, we opened the sealed bids for the stand. Yesterday at one o'clock, um Barnsworth Services got it for sixty-eight hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents. Um, they were the only ones to put in for it.
Would you give me that amount again?
Six thousand eight hundred sixteen forty cents.
Thank you.
Um. Today, the lady finally got back to us on the slide at the elementary school. She finally got one rounded up. Um, it's approximately four weeks out. Um, price on it's five thousand dollars twenty, five thousand twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Um. It's approximately four weeks out soon as it gets here, soon as we get a confirmed shipping day. Um, Colby will come up and he'll install it. Right there directly as soon as it gets here, so. That's all I have unless you guys have something for me.
Awesome. Anyone have questions for Adam? Angie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one. Um, Cindy and Kristen from WAP visited yesterday. Um. Our uh insurance is going up nine percent. Which will be a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Will be the added cost. For the. It it was higher, but they being in that trust in that that we saved some, so.
Yeah, WAP, we um. We took some. Of the money um in reserves. We have to keep us, we have to keep a certain amount for any incurred but not. Reported, so anything outstanding. And and to cover all the premiums, uh all the coverage. Uh, for a certain period of time for what people have paid, just in case there was some sort of disaster or. Something shut us, shut WAP down, so. Uh, but there was enough um in reserves to buy down. Um, um. Everything was bought down at least two percent.
I think ours was like four percent.
Was it four?
Yep.
Are you? Yeah, okay.
And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Nothing else?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing from me. I just was available tonight for discussion items, one and two.
Yeah, thank you for the letter about um. The seven period days that every, you sent to everyone. Thank you. We'll leave you for red board. Brad?
So Madam Chair, I'll um. I probably should wait for discussion items since that's. That's where it's most appropriate. Um. And then I'll 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 try to answer those two and then prepare some other thoughts for you as. The legislative session um comes to a close, but as you just heard from Angie, um. You know, the the biggest thing, guys, that we all have to keep thinking about as a district. Um, a year ago, we had thirty more students. If you do the calculations to that, that's almost another four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss. So we're gonna have to find ways to help take care of our people that take care of our children. And doing that um status quo is probably not gonna help us.
Board reports. Did you have any meeting? Jason, did you have any meetings?
I did, um, the only big thing was, um, let me, let me find it here. Uh. As you know, we we put out for a new director. Um, and. An offer was made and accepted and our new director, uh Naomi, and I'm gonna butcher her last name, Nima Tello. Um, accepted the offer, so she was, she was doing it interim anyways, um but. She was accepted and she's the BOSI's director, so. So she was, she was doing it interim anyways, um but. She was accepted and she's the BOSI's director, so. That's about all I got.
Alright, thank you. Um, WAP board did meet last Wednesday to look at utilization and um. Rate setting and and um, of course, that's um different for um. Different groups and we don't see what groups have the most utilization, so the board members are never. Biased that their group might be hitting a lower rate than some other group or it's all um. Just pretty anonymous so that it's unbiased and and I do appreciate that. Um, makes it easier. Um, the other thing we're uh doing is, um. There may be a few more items available for folks to use in the employee assistance uh program. And we're looking at um possibly uh moving from. Uh, the telemedicine option that we have now to another company that. Has more offerings uh for people to do telemedicine than uh the current one we have is, so. They're gonna be presenting to WAP in the future and so. That would be something that. Would change if it did on July first, so I believe that's the plan. So that's everything about WAP. Um. I'm not missing any reports, am I? No, alright, let's go on to um. Future.
It is Madam Chair.
What time, yeah?
I think, yeah, I think six o'clock is not giving us enough time. Um, we've tried it in that time period. Um, I think if we did. Five with with pizza, it gives us more more opportunity for conversation and then we're not rushing or. More important, people aren't waiting for us to come out of the exec.
I'm sorry. Oh. I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. We uh are looking at starting at five PM on March twelfth for an executive session to discuss. Administrators evaluations and contracts. It's been moved and seconded that we start at five PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion carried. So board self-evaluation, we, we had enough stuff going on last spring that we did not do a board self-evaluation. Um, do you still have that form? Um, what I was thinking was if we got that sent out soon for everyone to look at and then, um, we could maybe do those, um, on April ninth. That'll give us the two March meetings to do, um, evaluations and contracts and yeah, everybody can, um, everybody on the board will have plenty of time then to fill that out. And so if we can, if you would send that out for me, thank you. And we'll do our self-evaluation on April ninth. All right, discussion items, dismissal times for activities.
So, um, Madam Chair, um, I, I'll take these two separately, but there are some other items that I have that I will get to the board in, in time to consider. But one of the, the issues that I think needs to be addressed is that loss of the instructional day that it seems to me, from what I heard during the open forum on the four-day week, um, we were told repeatedly that other schools, you know, they protect their integrity of the day way better than we do. Um, I know that nobody has anybody control over high school activities, stuff because referees, facilities, all of those things, including mother nature. Um, but one of the things that I would like the board to consider moving down is at the middle school level, we really could simply state that nobody leaves before two o'clock and that does protect the integrity of our day. And then it's up to others to schedule accordingly. Um, so I'll, I'll stop at that one and address any questions that people may have with that one.
Questions? So you're any, just to be clear, you're saying just for middle school or at least for?
It would be anything that really is not a culminating or under the activities associated, the high school activities association.
Madam Chair?
Cause I don't want kids to lose out.
Joe was first.
Just one question, um, with middle school basketball, just finishing up, what about tournaments? Will we still allow them to go for those all day?
So that would be part of that conversation that we need to have. Um, so now again, a little bit bored historian here. Um, there was a time that we were taken out of those regional events and didn't know about it the week before. So maybe there's a chance to say, we will play in those, but we'll play at this time. Um, I don't know what the flexibility is there. Um, but the three A tournament, if you notice, was held on a Saturday. So it, it was just strange how we could make it work with one and not the other. But I, I think we did hear, or I heard, you know, that other school districts are, are better at protecting the integrity of the day. Guys, that's our decision. That's no one else's decision. So that would be a conversation to have. And maybe, maybe you don't have that, 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 that right. I don't know. Bryce, do you, do you know how that works at the middle school level? I don't. How that schedule works with the culminating districts, I, I think is what they call them.
The district tournaments, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure and just, you know, I typically, they used to be on a Tuesday, um, or at least when I coached middle school basketball, when I was still teaching. Um, it would be on the Tuesday of the week of state basketball. That's when it was my understanding and I, this is hearsay, so take it for what you want. Um, is that the two-way schools that were in this northeast district with didn't want this tournament during their regional basketball or their state basketball week. So therefore it got moved to, you know, the Friday before, um, just sidebar. They are also able to do this on a Friday because none of those schools have school on Fridays that are in that district with us. So just, you know, timing is weird. Uh, and then I just, you know, I think track meets and cross-country meets, we're still going to have to just go, right? With middle school.
Then our, did we, our home, is our Laura Cord tournament, middle school, high school? I know at one time we discussed.
Last year became a combo.
Cause you had help.
Meet, yep.
Okay. So then, so then maybe we don't protect the integrity of the day.
Billy?
Yeah, and kind of piggyback on that. I know like the best of the east or whatever too in track. You know, for middle school is usually like on a Tuesday or Thursday too as well, and it's an all-day thing. I mean, yeah, cross-country.
That says why this is a discussion item.
Joe?
What about, I mean, tournaments? You know, track beats, we could allow that, but if it's a single game event, can we protect the integrity of our day with a single day event? But have some allowance on, you know, I mean, the track meets all day long and, you know, basketball tournaments all day long, the wrestling tournaments all day long, so.
To answer your question, yes. I'm trying to figure out how you, how you would word that without excluding. I mean, if you're going open for one, somebody's going to say, well, you have a more of a value for that than you do my sport. I mean, that's, that's really the problem where we're at right now is, you know, cross-country. If you remember correctly, twenty years ago, the group that said they protected the integrity of the day, their cross-country event is on a Thursday afternoon. Last time I checked, that was part of four. It's just a thought. I mean, we, we heard that, that we needed to do a better job. It would help us with subs. Um, we are here for education first, but I think you'll see that's the complexity of where we're at because we, we are a three A school, we are two A size and we play in two different groups. And to do that consistently, that's going to be a challenge. Somebody, I, I don't know. To answer your question, yes, I just don't know how to do that right now.
Billy?
Brad, can't you just word it, any activity that is not, um, that is not a scheduled tournament? Um, cannot be scheduled. You know, just put like the word tournament or something in there, because that's cross-country, that's what a cross-country is, right? Track and field or an imitational, whatever you want to call it, tournament slash imitational has to be scheduled. Yeah, I mean, then you're not really singling a certain sport. I mean, you got the tournament slash imitational.
You know, maybe the directive just needs to be to the A D. That, you know, we are going to try to do a better job with that. And that, that's just the, the board's expectation. They have some professional discretion, uh, on track. I mean, let's face it, guys, track goes when track goes, because mother nature.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, you know, you can put out a track schedule, it, it drives people nuts because the Laura Cord Memorial, I think, has a better chance of particip- well, we'll have some degree of participation, but you have a greater degree of precipitation. And I think prom does the same thing. So, you know, maybe, maybe those are the things we look at. Maybe, you know, golf, cross-country, track. You know, maybe those are the exceptions to the rule.
Those are high school varsity events, right, though?
Yeah, the, the high school ones, I think truly, you know, for you to qual- my understanding is for you to qualify at a qualified event, you, you basically have to be there to, to either get a time or a distance to do that, or you don't qualify for the meet of champions or, or a school or a district record or conference record at the high school level. I just think we could do better with, with some of this stuff that's coming down the pike.
So I would, I would say it's my sense that the board is, is definitely supportive of trying to protect our teacher contact time a little better. Um, so would you like to?
I will add that to my list to keep on working.
Okay.
I will add that to my list to keep on working.
Okay. And before, um, bef- does anyone have anything else on, on dismissal time? Okay. Before we do the high school schedule, I did forget a recognition and that was that I saw, um, Brother Coy, uh, the governor has, uh, nominated Brad for another term as the U W trustee. The Senate, you got, you got a Senate hurdle. I've, I've done the Senate confirmation before. It's, it's interesting. All right. Sorry about that. High school schedule, okay.
So Madam Chair, again, under just discussion, um, but one of the things that I thought was an attempt to help um, teachers stress and things of that nature would be to, to do the exact opposite that I did twenty years ago. So when we went to the block, a lot of people were, were worried about not seeing kids every day and what that impact would have on their learning. Also that teachers were going to lose prep time. So in my discussion with that, those were the two main concerns that I had. However, I do realize that that has not been received that well. So with that, I think what we need to be looking at, and, and, and this goes along with the whole package thing, is for us to figure out how to keep pace with pay and benefits. Guys, we've got a lot of big issues in front of us. I mean, you, you have the loss of A D M. You have the move of the contract to the school's facilities. I don't know what the educational savings accounts impacts will be or, or won't be. Um, you just heard from Angie what the health thing is. Um, there's a huge cost with the pool, which I don't think you would ever cover with general fund money. We'll do that with grants. But what I would like to do with the, the, that proposal is to simply put that out there for when we correct size. In other words, another kindergarten class in the thirties again? Let's hope that's not true. Um, a third grade class that's small. The high school is going to be large right now compared to where they've been in the middle school. But somehow through attrition, and I'm not talking about programs, they're two different things. And it's not a hiring phrase, but I do believe anytime somebody retires or resigns, if it's not tied to a program, we need to capitalize on that to try to create money from within, not legislative stuff. Um, but the powers of, of our local control are going to have to be exercised. And it's going to have to look differently because it, we have a huge A D M issue. Um, and it doesn't seem to be getting any better. Um, and, and again, going back to what, you know, Jason said last board meeting, um, I do think we need to do a much better job, or I need to do a much better job of trying to put, you know, value to ti- time, um, staff, staff stress. Um, I'm working with some calendar stuff and how maybe we could do that with our Fridays. Um, treat people as professionals and, and do those kinds of things. Um, but I am worried about programming. Um, you know, Presley, um, just did a great job in telling you, um, how important those things are that we've tried to hang on to forever, even when it has not been comfortable budget-wise. Um, I think if I read current legislation, if that is going to be a categorical funding, there may be, there may be some savings there that says that, you know, that will be, this is my interpretation, so hang on, because I'm not a legislator. But if it's categorical funding, it would be general fund reimbursement, reimbursable, meaning that whatever you offer this year, you get reimbursed next school year at a hundred percent. That would be huge for a district our size who is disproportionately large with C T E programs. Cause then that point five goes away. I mean, you would get funded for the five, four? I think it is five. I think middle school's included. Um, so that changes some things in the funding. But again, to, to do that, um, all I'm trying to do is not, not trying to be evil here. I'm not, not trying to, you know, ruin your culture. I'm not. Um, but if we don't have those conversations now and you wait till you have a high school of a hundred and fifty kids, then it's going to be too late. And then even if you did receive new money and all you're doing is staying status quo, you're going to lose your ability to, to retain. So I'm just throwing those things out there, but, um, I don't think the seven-period day has to happen tomorrow. But I do think down the road, the more shared staff that you can have may be the difference in keeping a program or not. But I really saw it as time. Um, I was using the same methodology that was used against me with the block schedule. Um, so there was no harm meant. Um, there's good and bad to all of it, but remember, it's really not about the amount of time you have. It's what you do with that time.
Anyone else have anything to add to that? Do you have anything, Bryce?
I didn't know if you guys had any questions from me or, you know, I only received one email from a staff member that also included me and you at the same time. Um, otherwise I heard back from only a handful of staff members after I gave my input to them. Um, I'd say I heard too loud no's. I heard some softer no's that were like, if we did it, it, you know, it'd be fine, but I prefer this because of the depth I can go into with the content with my students, um, both in lab areas and in, um, core areas. I heard it from both. Um, and then a few, you know, if we're going to have to do this anyway down the road, maybe we do it right now. And so I, my staff, I'd say is, is all over the place. Um, as far as, as where they, they sit on this. Um, it's what you do with the time that you have. I think that matters. Um, I think they'll do their absolute best if in a block schedule, I think they'll do their absolute best in a seven-period day, whatever it is. They're going to show up to help kids, um, graduate on time with their peers um, and be productive members of the workforce. And I think that's what, that's what matters most when they leave our schools is that they can go, um, produce in our communities or in our, you know, regional economy. Um, that's all is my hope. And so, um, I didn't get a ton of feedback from them that was very specific one way or the other. Um, change is hard, so I think there's some people that are worried about that and stressed about that. Um, Mr. La Croix's comment about we don't need to do it. Um Mr. La Croix's comment about we don't need to do it tomorrow maybe is a is a good comment. I think some of them would be worried with uh switching pacing guides, lesson planning, scheduling from a block schedule to a seven-period day. But again, if if we did it next year, they would, you know, you kind of tear the Band-Aid off and you'd you'd go with it. Um if you had a year to plan, you might have opportunities, but you know, you're really, really busy during the year. You might not have opportunity to really go through your scope and sequence and make it perfect for a, you know, a forty-eight or fifty-four minute class period the next year. And so I don't know what the best option or idea is, whether you just go for it right away or if you wait until um one of those retirements that falls into an attrition schedule that makes you combine a department, middle school, high school. I mean, that's when it would be, okay, we're doing this next year because this is the opportunity in front of us. Or do you do it now? When you have some think time and you can, one of my staffers said, we could just get really good at it before we had to do it. And so those those are my thoughts.
And and I would say this particular point has to be part of the discussion of what we do when we are looking at and know exactly what our budget is because we also have a bill down there to change the number of days. Did it die today? Yesterday? Oh, I may have missed that then. Yeah. I have a, I am, I am experiencing a little legislative traumatic distress order, so I haven't kept up with everything exactly, but yeah, so there's still a lot that could happen coming out of there and we don't know what the budget, but I think when we know what it is, that will be the time to look at this as part, as a possible part of a solution.
So Madam Chair, the other thing that we did discuss the other day are, you know, there is a lot of pressure under public education right now. And rightfully so. It's it's our job to do the, to to take that and and make it better. And so one of the things that I asked all of them to really think about is, you know, what are the one or two, three things that you think your school or your area does better than anyone else? I mean, what what makes you stand out amongst the crowd? Because I think that is huge. And and the other thing I I I've asked them all to look at is if there really is some stuff that we can just take off the table, then then we need to take it off the table. Um and really do a better job of of prioritizing what needs to be done. Um because if we don't, we are pretty easy targets right now, not just legislatively, but I think even in the community. So I do think those are things that all of you, you know, could help us with um when you hear those kinds of things. You know, and the other thing that that we've really, well, I've I've really worked hard at with their help is, you know, how does that Friday really look? Um and are there some things that we could do to say, you know, it's Susan, you're the professional here. You know what your priorities are. Um yes, it's a full day. It's a full day. But you know what? Maybe today's the day that you just need to go have lunch with your family. I mean, you're a professional. We know you're going to get that time done. The job gets done. And are there one or two that are going to take advantage of this? Yes. But we're not going to beat the whole group over one or two people at speed.
As the point guard, as the team leader, what do you, what do you do personally? What do you do to help your team get to the level that I know you guys all want to be at and and I know your fans want to see at?
Yeah, um me, well, I'm not going to stop, you know, preparing and working hard when the time when we're not in practice. You know, I'm going to continue to get in the gym. But um as a leader and a teammate, uh right now, uh we're coming off a losing streak and we we are the desperate team. Uh we need to figure it out and find a way to win these close games because I feel like with all the top teams that we've played, we've played to the to our competition, whether it's up or down. And we just haven't been winning these close games. I I feel like, um, you know, over time, we can't keep losing these close games. We gotta start to figure out the small one-possession mistakes or the small late-game mistakes that are losing us these games in a close, close situation. And um, you know, I feel like uh we just have to understand that it's the Mountain West and we can't come out flat versus anybody.
One or two that are going to take advantage of this, yes. But we're not going to beat the whole group over one or two people at speed, or just not. But there's got to be a way that we start taking a little bit more control of the things that we can do and we can do well. I I always told, I told the group this. I can remember when Shanae was a freshman and we went to the School of Mines and the the president said, we do three things like nobody else in the world does. And I thought, oh, that's a pretty good statement. And she said, we do math, science, and technology like nobody else. And everybody in the industry knows that. So when our graduates go across the stage and you want somebody that's really handy in math, science, and technology, come to the School of Mines. I think we need to have that same kind of a pride here. Um we talked a lot about kid care. We talk a lot about adult care. You know, what do we, what do we do better? And one of the things that I think we could do on that Friday is to to let people have some professional discretion. I don't care what you want to label it. And so with that, the other thing that I will bring back to you next, next board meeting is um I've had several parent requests to identify on a map that when I miss the snow days and we're going to make those up, what what days would they be? Um so conveniently in the calendar draft, um I have some snowflakes on those days that would represent that. And knowing that I did that, we probably won't get any more snow for the next ten years. It happens. But but anyway, those are all conversations that we're having. I think they're all related to this kind of stuff. But, you know, our value in in our people, we we, I need to do a better job.
All right, anyone have any comments or questions? Tyler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually kind of directed towards Bryson's. Uh I kind of glanced through the email that we got. Did you discuss with the staff at all? Um because I know there was a lot of concern that the seven-day be, or seven-period day being a four-day week versus the actual four and a half that we're going to. Uh was there anything mentioned about, I know we had discussed heavily about our C T Es and the lab time concerned with that? Maybe possibly putting that right at the enrichment hour so they have that extra time and making that enrichment hour part of that?
Um I haven't dove too deep into a hybrid schedule where they would have a, you know, like a longer block or double-block C T E. You know, that gets you into some weird stuff where you're going to have to have multiple different areas doing that. You're going to have to have an A B rotation because if they're double-blocked every day, then technically they complete the whole year in one semester. I mean, it's, it makes it a little foggy. I think there's probably places that do it, but I think there's probably places that do it with larger staffs than us. Um I, in a small school, I wrapping my head around it without really sitting and doing it. It doesn't seem as feasible to do that hybrid model um with the smaller staff. I and I could be wrong. As far as like enrichment Fridays, so this, I'm going to steal a quote from Tyler. You can, you know, you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything you want. So I think where my staff was with the four-day thing was, okay, we can't have the block, but we could have the four-day week and we could get that work time. You know, that was the trade. That was anything you want, everything you want. Now, though, the the day doesn't go from eight to four in a seven, in our current calendar. So then that squishes everything. So now I think some people are torn between that E R block of time and that intervention that they get. And six to seven more minutes, you know, getting rid of that and having six to seven more minutes in their class period because you can get those fifty-six-minute class periods or whatever I have in that schedule draft I sent you without E R, but then E R goes away. If you want enrichment Fridays for the shortened amount of time. Um there you go. There's another planning prep for you. Without giving you more time to do it. And so it's, it's one of those things. I think they're torn in that way. You know, I think, I don't know, I was only in Upton one year. Our class built that press box that's up on the Teed Weaver Field. Um they did a pretty good job and, you know, we were on a seven-period day. So I I think you can still get things done. I think habits have to change. I think um, you know, you just have to be really efficient with the time that you have. But I also value, you know, sometimes uh to make chicken stock, that takes a long time to boil that all together and cut that, the cut the bird up and put it in there and make it properly. And so there's labs that, you know, no matter what, they take longer than fifty-four minutes. And so adjusting to those things, I I think is difficult and it's hard to wrap your brain around when you're first thinking of those things. But I think there's probably people that have done it anywhere that they could still do that.
Anyone else have anything? All right, so I'm I'm sure we'll be visiting about this again in the future. All right. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight? I adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we'll call the Eastern and Western County Recreation Board to order. Um you have an agenda in front of you. We are going to, I believe we're going to amend it to table section E, item number two, A, the do we just table it then? Okay, we'll move to a car club autocross to the next meeting. Since, yeah, since we are not ready for this one.
If to approve the amended agenda?
Been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the same sign. Agenda's approved. Recognitions, are there any recognitions? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments. Staff input or special programs? Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. Number one, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose the same sign. Since we don't have any old business discussed till next meeting, I see no new business. I have nothing for your information unless anybody else does. Um is there anything that anybody wants to discuss?
Mr. Chair, one of the things that maybe CeeLo and I could help you with is we do have to have a sense of urgency on the necessary paperwork. I will call it insurance paperwork or the legal work paperwork that they still have not and that's got to have, that's going to have to happen quick because for us to to move forward, that's a huge piece. So if with your permission, I'll have maybe Teresa, Angie, and CeeLo assist you. Did you know how I left myself out?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we'll definitely I'll be trying to get ahold of Pam and tomorrow, try to. So, yeah, we'll get that done as soon as we possibly can. And then, yeah, if I could have some help with that, that would be lovely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jason.
Did we not give them a date? In our last meeting, I thought we had a a hard date for them to have that turned into us.
Um yes, I believe, I believe we did give them a hard date. Um I was just letting everybody know that as of this evening, we still haven't have nothing.
We'll get, we'll make, I'll make sure they know. Was there a hard, what was the hard date? Again? It was March twelfth. I remember discussing the twelfth, but I don't Yeah, that's my fault. I should have brought that up today.
Can we put a hard date on that, Joe? Just tell them by March twelfth. We need the information before March twelfth meeting so we can make a decision on it.
If I could have one of you guys reach out to her with that, please.
Well, I think it's simple. I mean, it just, yeah, we have it before the twelfth. Otherwise, it's it's a no. It's it's dead in the water, so.
Sorry, losing my train of thought here. Um yes. So we'll get that hard date to them and then yeah, we'll we'll be in contact with Pam. Is there any other discussion on this? No. Yes.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Just finished swim season, so, but um thanks for going. I I think winter season went fairly smoothly considering it was pretty full. I hadn't had any complaints. I think everything went well.
And the the early weight room hours are still going?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's been great. And it actually worked out to our benefit one morning because Nancy had texted at four in the morning with the stomach flu. And so they were there until we could get somebody down there. So, yeah, they've they've been great. And, yeah.
Thank you. All right, is I believe that was all on discussion items. Is there anything else come before the board? Meeting adjourned.